We'll note that all commissioners are present. The first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, the motion carries. Next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So we'll move to the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there is to hear the year end financial report for 2012. Mrs. Johnson will present that.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I'd like to highlight a few items from the financial report for 2012. I will begin with a few highlights on the cash balance report. I don't have a slide for that, but I wanted you to be aware of a few things on page six in your report. The building construction fund shows a large negative cash balance in 2012. This is due to construction on the wastewater treatment plant. This balance will be offset by oil impact grant monies from the state. Those grants have been approved and the request for funds has been made. But until we hear the confirmation of funds being received, we won't be able to offset that until we receive that confirmation. So that may change before year end. Also, the large positive cash balance in the water wastewater fund will be used towards this construction as well. Also, as a side note, I've adjusted the reports to show both the original budget and the amended budget. All comparisons of actual to budget are using the amended budget. And in our general fund report, with 100 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.3 million and we're 100 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees, which include financial institution tax and franchise fees, is 110 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals include revenues we receive from state and local governments, such as highway distribution tax and oil production tax, and is 115 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses fees and services includes building permit revenues and oil royalties and is 108 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $863,000 over last year. And our municipal court fines are up $194,000 over last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment, we have sold $1.6 million of city lots through 2012. This amount has been transferred to our future fund at year end. Our total general fund revenues equal $15.8 million for 2012 and we're 106 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses, general government includes our administration, our court, finance, and buildings and grounds, and is 108 percent expended compared to budget. This is due to the final costs on our public transit building, which is shown as both an expense and a revenue. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is 102 percent expended compared to budget. This is due to equipment purchased using an additional liquor license sale. Our engineering and streets is 93 percent expended compared to budget. And our cultural services, which includes the museum and forestry, is 70 percent expended compared to budget. Our contingency and reserve includes the West River Community Center major maintenance reserve and our contingency account, which totals $70,000 at the end of December. Our total general fund expenses equal $13.9 million for 2012 and we're 99 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water wastewater revenue is $10.3 million for 2012, which is 97 percent collected compared to our amended budget and 38 percent more than last year. Our large increase in revenue is due to several factors, including $500,000 increase in consumption, an $800,000 increase in connection fees, an $800,000 increase in our water vendor, and $400,000 from Stark Development for sewer improvements. Our expenses and capital outlays total $7.4 million, which is 114 percent expended compared to budget. In our solid waste fund, our revenues are $3.4 million for 2012, which is 105 percent collected compared to budget and 15 percent more than last year. And our expenses and capital outlays total $3.2 million, which is 102 percent expended compared to budget.
Can we go back to that slide? On the water wastewater fund, the capital outlays in round numbers of $1.5 million. I would understand that none of those capital outlays were for the wastewater treatment plant. Those were just normal course of the year capital outlays.
Correct. That would be equipment. We did have a water main replacement project and a sewer main replacement project that were already scheduled. Those would be in there, but not the plant itself.
Okay. Thank you.
In the sales tax reports, in our 1 percent sales tax fund, we received $648,000 of revenue in December, which is up 41 percent for the year. Our 1 percent sales tax fund is broken down into three groups. The first is our 50 percent share, which is for street projects and infrastructure. In 2012, the entire 50 percent was transferred to the street projects fund at year end and totaled $3.5 million. The second segment is our 20 percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds Stark Development, elder care, and the R S V P subsidies, along with our senior citizen and Southwest Regional Grant Programs. Our expenses for 2012 total $832,000.
And our ending cash balance there is $935,000 then?
And our third segment is the 30 percent share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The expenses here include $50,000 for a portion of the BAC pledge payment, with the remainder in our hospitality tax. In our half percent sales tax, we received $324,000 of revenue in December, which is also up 41 percent for the year. Our expenses include $945,000 for the West River Community Center bond, $769,000 transferred to the general fund for property tax relief, $1 million to the building construction fund for the Public Works Building, and $1 million to the development impact fee program. In our hospitality tax, we received $102,000 of revenue in December, which is up 35 percent over last year. Our expenses total $1.3 million, which includes our BAC pledge payment, the airport hangar grant, Parks and Rec lighting grant, landscaping for the T R statue, and a portion of the museum The occupancy tax breakdown shows revenues total $80,000 in December, which is up 55 percent over last year. In 2012, our expenses include the CBB Special Events Grant and their subsidy for $390,000, the T R Symposium Grant of $20,000, and a portion of the museum expenses. In the street projects report, we received $3.6 million in revenues and we expended $1.6 million towards those projects for 2012.
Can you go back to that slide again? So in our street fund, we ended the year with nearly $4.8 million in cash?
Correct. We do, in the schedule that we have received, we do have some large amounts coming, I believe, in 2015, but we do have this cash balance right now. And the amount that's coming out would not be greater than this cash balance.
Say that again, though.
We had a project scheduled, we have a DOT schedule, and one of the projects that was coming in a future year had a very large share on our part. I don't remember what the project was for, but I know one of the reasons we were carrying a cash balance is because we knew that project was coming.
And that's like in 2015?
2015, I believe. And in the development impact fee program, this is broken down into residential and commercial components. The schedule shows the impact fee projects that have been approved. The program has a balance of $182,000 available for commitment at the end of 2012. And those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And you'll, in March now, you'll be able to give us the first two months of 2013?
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Jackson, you are going to have to handle item B on the non timetable agenda because both of them involve M D U and I have a conflict there.
Mr. President, you need a motion to accept the financial report yet?
Thank you, Mr. Coling. I was just about to get to that after I talked to Mr. Jackson about item B.
Right.
Would there be a motion to accept the, or approve the financial report?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll go ahead and vote. And then, Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to item B and I'll turn the gavel over to Mr. Jackson and he'll conduct this item.
Okay. Item B consists of two different items having to do with service area agreements and franchise agreements between M D U and Rough Rider Electric. I have a hunch. Mr. Kessel? Mr. Coling?
I'll take it, Mr. Jackson.
Okay.
Mr. Vice President Commissioners, the proposed agreement in your packets is a service area agreement between M D U and Rough Rider Electric Cooperative. This agreement covers the respective jurisdictions over which both M D U and Rough Rider will provide service to residents of Dickinson, as well as some areas that may in the future be annexed by the City of Dickinson. This agreement has been approved by both M D U and Rough Rider. It is also subject to the approval of the City Commission, as well as the North Dakota Public Service Commission. I understand that the Public Service Commission has given their approval to this agreement and any rate increases or rate changes by either M D U or Rough Rider would be subject to approval of the Public Service Commission. City staff have reviewed the agreement and recommend approval. Mr. Jackson.
Questions for Mr. Coling? I have one. When I looked at the map, I see areas that are currently under development that don't fall into the green or the red. Maybe a curiosity question more than anything else, but what happens with those areas? Do we know?
Mr. Jackson, there's a statutory procedure that companies electric utilities need to follow for newly developed areas. That statutory procedure would remain in effect, notwithstanding this agreement. This just pertains to the areas that are in red and green for their respective service areas.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So we simply need a motion to approve the agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved. Your chair?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this motion? If not, we'll vote.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
Chair will vote aye. Mr. Johnson abstains, I presume.
Motion carries. So we move to now the renewal portion? Is that correct? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Vice President Commissioners, the next item involves two franchise agreements, one for M D U and one for Rough Rider Electric. These franchise agreements would be renewals of their current franchise to provide electric service within the City of Dickinson. It is necessary in order to, for us to comply with the service area agreement that has been agreed to by both of the parties. And both these electric utilities would then provide electric service pursuant to these franchises. These are ordinances that do require first reading, second reading, and final passage for your approval. So city staff would recommend first reading of this, both of these ordinances at this time. The ordinances for your record keeping would be 1497 and 1498.
Let's talk about the M D U ordinance first then. Any comments from commissioners or questions? If not, because it is an ordinance, we should ask if we have comments from the public. Do we have anybody that wants to make comments about the M D U agreement? Any comments from the public? Okay. I see no comments on the M D U agreement. Looks like we need a motion from the board to approve first reading of this ordinance. This is 1497.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, first reading ordinance 1497.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Comment? If not, we'll vote.
Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to the Rough Rider agreement. Any additional comments there, Mr. Coling, from you?
No additional comments. The franchises are essentially the same for both entities.
Okay. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Again, this is first reading of an ordinance, 1498. We'll open it up to the public if any of the public wants to make comment on the Rough Rider, the Rough Rider franchise agreement. Any comments from the public? Okay. If not, we'll look for another motion for 1498.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading for ordinance 1498.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion from any commissioners? Okay. We'll vote. Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That motion carries as well.
That should take care of that business. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. You're doing so well. I hate to take this back from you.
It's all right.
We'll go to item C. That's human resources, job reclassifications, and job descriptions. I think there are three of them there. Mrs. Nomenek is going to introduce those.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. We have three job descriptions. The first one, we're asking for consideration to approve reclassification of the utility billing clerk for City Hall. It is currently a Class 1. We're changing the title to utility billing representative and requesting that this position be reclassified to a Class 2. After placing this position into the compensable factors format, which we've been doing with all of our job descriptions, it did score 425 points, which puts it into a Class 2. We currently have two employees in this position. One of the employees is currently in a Class 1 Step 6 and would go to a Class 2 Step 2, making the same rate of pay. And then the other employee is at a Class 1 Step 10 and is at the top of that class, making this a Class 2 position, then would go to a Class 2 Step 6. Would see a little bit of an increase in that salary.
Did you just reevaluate the job or did the job change?
We did. We did reevaluate it, putting it into the compensable factors format that I've been working on with all of the job descriptions. And we scored it in all the different areas and that's how this position came out as far as points, which then put it into a higher class.
So we're not changing the job responsibilities at all? You would just say that it was mistakenly?
Correct.
Classified in the wrong class, I guess.
That is correct.
Okay. I had a similar curiosity question. Do you do other job descriptions, other positions, that you see no change?
We do. There have been, most of them have not really seen a change. I anticipate others, you know, maybe even going down. This one showed that it should have gone up.
Do we act on each one of these separately? Mr. Coling?
Yes, Mr. President, you would.
Okay. Do you want to present all three first?
Sure.
Then, you want to do that?
Sure. I'll do that. The second one is the utility billing clerk position for the sanitation department. We're asking to reclassify that position and change the title to sanitation office assistant. This position is currently in a Class 1 and with the compensable factors update, it scored a 475, which is a little bit higher than the other position, but still fell into a Class 2. This position is currently vacant and we will be advertising the position. So there is nobody in the position currently.
For Class 2, these compensable factors, what is the range? What's the low and what's the high?
I was afraid you would ask me that and I did not bring it with me this evening. I'm sorry. I can present that to you.
Is it in the memo? I don't, I'm looking at the memo.
I don't believe I-
I don't think it is. Mr. Coling, do you think you have that information?
I'm looking for it. I'll see if I can find it.
Okay. We'll let you go on to the next one while Mr. Coling's looking.
The third one is consideration to approve a new job description for a scale attendant. With the increased business and activity at the Baylor Building, we've had need for additional staff out there. We have one person that is currently helping in this capacity and we did not have a job description created. So we felt the need to create a job description, helping the utility billing clerk, or if approved, it would be the sanitation office assistant, to run the scale and to verify the loads and that sort of thing. This position scored 300 points, which falls into a Class 1, and that's what the position currently was. There would be no change in pay, class, or step for the person that is currently doing these duties.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Coling, do you have an answer to my question?
Mr. President, I have the wage range, but not the point values that are assigned to each class.
I guess the reason I ask it would be important for me to know, you know, if, for example, if the top range in the Class 1 was 424 points and this one got 425. I mean, I guess I'd like to know just how close we are, if you can remember.
I'm guessing it's 25 to 50 points from the bottom of the range. It's within 25 to 50 points on this one. It's not within one or two.
Okay. All right. Are there other questions? Other comments? Mr. Kessel, anything you'd want to add?
President Johnson and Commissioner, this is an excellent, the scale attendant position is an excellent example of how when a community grows, jobs get specialized. The utility billing clerk that was classified in the sanitation department used to fulfill those duties of scale attendant. Because those position duties changed for the sanitation, what we're calling now the sanitation office assistant, assuming, pending approval tonight, basically pulled out some of those duties and now created a different position and one that we think that obviously will need long term. So hence, a new job description. The Civil Service Commission, by the way, has weighed in on all of these and has agreed to all the changes that are being recommended before you this evening. That concludes my report. And I want to give credit to Ms. Nomenek. She's, it's not easy to go through all these compensable factors and all these positions because it does affect people's pay and not always positively. And tonight, it does affect it positively if passed, but that's not always the case.
I don't recall you bringing any to us that the jobs went down, the classification.
We have yet either, but we will.
If there's no other questions or comments, we'll take these one at a time and we'll do them in the order that they're listed on the agenda. So the first one is the utility billing clerk reclassification to sanitation office assistant. Would there be a motion either to approve the reclassification or not approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And the second one is the utility billing clerk reclassification to utility billing representative. Again, your choices are the same, either to approve or not approve. Would there be a motion one way or the other?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. And then the third one is the scale attendant job description. Would there be a motion regarding this item?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookart.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to 5 o'clock. We have one timetable agenda item, and that's to hear about the Public Works Building Construction Bid. And Mr. Kessel, I think-
Go ahead.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioner. As you mentioned, we did bid the Public Works Building. This is a structure that was designed by Hulsing Associates. Ms. Perkel's in the audience today for any additional information. I'm going to go through some of the basics regarding the bid process. Any questions regarding the building or its structures, I will defer to Ms. Perkel. First of all, we had one prime, single prime bid from Skull Construction, and we had four in terms of general contractors, two for electrical contractors, and four for mechanical contractors. So the, rather, the bids for multiple primes is what worked out to be the least expensive option. So our recommendation is not to award to a single prime, but to do a multiple prime bid. If you refer to the handout that I provided this evening on your desk, it's slightly different than the one that was provided to you earlier in your packet information. This provides a nice synopsis of the structure itself. The first line or column is, regards the project. In order to make sure we had a good idea of price and we could try to award those things that were most important, but yet not go over budget, we do have a great many alternates that we did bid in this project. The first, of course, is the building itself. The base bid, Shingabee, was the low bidder of $9,419,800. Central Mechanical was the low mechanical bid at $2,295,000, and Burger Electric at $1,214,600, for a total of $12,929,400. The architect's estimate was slightly over $15 million. So very competitively bid. I'm going to walk our way down some of these projects as they were listed on the bid documents. The first, or next, is the animal shelter. And what you see in the next column is the general, the electrical, and the mechanical portions of that bid. So when you award the animal shelter, if you choose to tonight, you would be awarding alternates G1, E1, and M1. Again, I'm not going to go through all of the numbers specifically, but I will say the total for the construction side of that was $692,700 with an architect's estimate of half a million dollars. So that project did go over the architect's estimate by just under $200,000. The next was the fire department substation. We did review the addition of a garage and some sleeping quarters for future fire department staff. A platform lift, also just under $3,000 less than the architect's estimate. We're recommending that award. Tables and chairs, we are not recommending the award on that. Those are fairly easy items that we could acquire on our own and so we've chosen not to recommend award there. The roadway itself is something that's a must. We have to access the building and this would be a new roadway that would connect Energy Drive to the new structure and provide access to the animal shelter. That award would be $317,000 and just under $50,000 under the architect's estimate. Painting the vehicle bay came in at, at just under $18,000 less than the architect's estimate. We are recommending that award. The south snowmelt, this is a location on the south side of the building that would be used for cleaning, outside cleaning of vehicles. The concern is, is if you're using water to, to do that, it would ice up rather quickly, especially in our winters. And to have an underground heating system would keep that clear and therefore hopefully safer, both from an accident perspective of, of employees and from a building and potential vehicle collisions. The next is a fire pump. The, we are recommending award, although I will mention, the reason that we need this fire pump is we do not have adequate water service, adequate water pressures to this building at this time. We, our water modeling suggests that a water tower of some variety or storage is, is in need in this area and we may be, within the near future, allocating that project to be done. So our recommendation is to award the fire pump as part of this process, but then we can change order out that piece of equipment if it's not needed once we get to the end stages of the construction process. So that may be $61,000 that we, we could save on the project expense, but that would also mean a storage or other, some other kind of water project. Aluminum airlines, this is, the difference here is between aluminum and steel. Aluminum is much easier to work with and can provide us with spaces after construction if we need to add a, an airline. It's easier to put a saddle on, on an aluminum airline where steel, you can't do that. It's a much more difficult and labor-intensive process. Just to make sure that the commission has a good idea of the total costs of this building and also included specialized equipment. We've not put that in the bid because we can save on sales tax, we can save on, on general overhead and profit that the general does not have to order, that they would put on by doing that ourselves. The major item involved in that estimate of expense is a $220,000 fuel island. The intent is that all city vehicles would be fueled at the public works building or at this site, rather than using multiple fuel stations or, or gas stations around the community. We'd buy in bulk and hopefully recognize a, a savings in our fuel expenses by doing so. And then the last item is a architect's fee of 6%, bringing the subtotal of the award recommendations to just under $16 million, 15.9. A 5% contingency fund would represent about $750,000 or total construction and outfitting of the building at about 16.7 million dollars. I've also provided for you then, an estimate of anticipated ways to, to pay for this structure. These are, are items that are suggestions. Obviously, they're, we can, we can talk about whether or not you'd like to utilize them in a, in a different way. But the first is $8 million, $8.1 million dedicated from our half percent sales tax, broken down from a million dollars from 2012, 4.1 in 2013 and 3 million in 2014. The state oil impact grant, this is a grant that we've already received of 2 point, almost 2.9 million dollars. General fund dedication from 2012 of a half a million. All three of those items, other than the future, the 2013 and 2014 half percent sales tax are, are things that have, we've, we've incurred that revenue. The next three then are items that, or revenue streams we could use moving forward. The first, I'm going to skip over the general fund for now and explain that in a little bit. Sales tax, the 30% fund, what's that intended to do is, is to pay for the animal shelter. That cost is a combination of the base bid of $692,700, a percentage of the architect's fee to design that, I, I put in 5%. The roadway itself, again, is, is a, a cost that can be split out because it will provide access to the animal shelter. I put 20% of that roadway and then 5% of the contingency fund because there more than likely will be some kind of change orders related to that structure. You add those things together, that comes up to $850,000 and we could use the 30% portion of the sales tax to cover those costs. The next item is the state infrastructure funding. Again, this is a little bit presumptuous because the state is meeting, of course, the legislature is, and the state impact, oil impact fund program does have bills that would potentially change how that program would be implemented. If it stays in its current form, we would be slated to receive about the same today as we did in years gone by, which would mean about 2.9 million additional funds that could be applied to this building. If 1358 legislation passes, and we'll cover that a little bit, a little bit later in the report, that means that the City of Dickinson is slated for around 12.7 million dollars. If that's the case, that's 12.7 annually. We could dedicate more dollars if that passes to this structure, if the city commission desires. I will say that we have a great many infrastructure projects that are going to be needed and, and funding required and, and that would be the dollars, for the most part, that we'd be inclined to use for most of those infrastructure projects. And then what remains is 1.4 million dollars and I simply took the general fund account as the, the fund balance of that account is, is one that we could use. That would mean that we would pay for the building without any kind of a bond and/or financial encumbrance, other than the ones that I have, I've mentioned to you this evening. The, in terms of structures and comparison to other buildings that are of like nature, the Burley County Shop was recently bid. That was a, they received a bid of $133 per square foot. The base bid in this one would be about 129. You include some of these other things, it, it of course raises that, but, and then the Prairie Rose School, different type of construction, was at 198 per square foot. I just throw those in to, to make that relative so that you can see that it was, I think, a pretty good bid. So with that, I would invite Ms. Perkel up. If you wanted to know more about square footage and, and building amenities, she could go through, walk through some of those features that this structure will provide our, our staff and the public.
Good evening, everyone. I guess I didn't really prepare anything for tonight. I'm just basically here for questions. We went through the building previously and nothing really changed from the last time we spoke. We did get three good bids in all three bidders I have worked with personally on previous projects and with no problems, so I have recommended that these specific contractors be used for this project. I don't see, foresee any problems there. They're very good contractors.
Why do you think we didn't get more general contract bids?
I had, I think, 11 or more on the list and that's, don't know why I didn't get any more than that. That's, four is pretty good. I mean, it's a very large project and it's hard to get bonded for that amount of money, so it, it takes a very large contractor to come in and do this project.
Mr. President. Ms. Perkel, what can you tell us about Shingabe? Who are they? Where are they at?
They're out of Minneapolis. I did a project with them in Williston. They did the Montrel Williams Electric Co-op Warehouse. It was about a $4 million project that they did two years ago. They were under a very tight timeframe. It was a precasted building similar to this. They started in March and, and had it complete in July. It was a four-month period, so they were very excellent in getting it done in that timeframe. So we had very good luck with them in a timely matter. They pretty much sub out most of their work. They're, like, they manage the project. They don't bring in their own forces, so they're more like a manager than a, they won't have their own people here. They'll subcontract.
They're a paper contractor, basically?
Well, I don't know if I, they'll be doing this project this way. You know, I, I can't say that they don't do, in Minnesota, they may have their own forces.
So who would they use to?
I didn't get a list of their subs, so I, when we ask for their contract, we do get a list of subs, so we would have a list of all their subs at that point in time.
Is this something where we will be able to see that list?
Oh, yes.
And approve their subs?
Yes, if there's somebody on the list that we don't approve of, we can request that they use someone else.
Thank you.
What are you most concerned about in terms of uses for the contingency fund? I mean, when you look at this project, what, what, what most concerns you?
I guess I don't really have too many concerns. It's a clean project, you know? If we would find something underground that we don't know of, we did take soils tests, but I have had soils tests taken before and between point A and point B, a coal vein ran through it or something like that. Things like that can happen and are unforeseen. This isn't an addition where we're pulling walls down and things like that can happen, so I don't foresee a lot of contingency items. If there's some changes made or somebody wants to do something differently, that sometimes happens in the process, but I don't foresee any big changes.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
I just have a question. I thought Comstock was cheaper for the animal shelter bid.
You can't take their bid. You have to take who the base bid is and then add them up. You can't take one contractor's price here and another contractor's price there. You have to take all of Shingabe's prices across alternates.
Other comments or questions?
Question for Mr. Kessel. Now that we're finally there on this project, what are the thoughts about current public works buildings?
Mr. Jackson, there's, the intention is to sell those structures off once we're able to occupy these buildings. I will say that the, the new water treatment plant that the Southwest Water is, is planning is most likely, the final decision hasn't been made, but most likely is going to be located directly west of our water building. They, we've got a yard there. They've asked us to put together a parcel and an appraisal for that parcel that they could then utilize to construct a wastewater, or excuse me, a water treatment facility. So we're in that process of doing exactly that. So I would anticipate that, that we could either sell those buildings to multiple buyers or a single buyer after we carve out that piece for the water treatment.
Okay, so those, that revenue would offset some of this cost?
It certainly could and, and I didn't put that in there because it's an unknown and we'll experience that down the road, you know?
Sure.
A couple of years.
The other question I have, maybe for the public, this facility is going to, I believe, replace more than just the two buildings down on Broadway. How many buildings will this facility actually replace?
Well, it'll place those two buildings on Broadway. It'll replace the animal shelter that we're currently using, assuming that's awarded tonight. We do plan to keep the Baker Building.
We do.
That is down on that location. Yeah, the, because of the location of this structure, it, for some of our, our slower-moving equipment, such as street sweepers, it's more efficient to keep them somewhere downtown and that, that's the site that we would most likely use those. But all, all of our operations then will be consolidated to this point, our public works operations. So our, our street, our water and our wastewater will all, all go there. Of course, when the wastewater treatment facility is, is open, some equipment and staff will be located in that structure as well.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I think Mr. Kessel has presented a possible funding plan here for the building and I, I think there are also other plans that would work. Either way, I'm comfortable that we have the funds to do this or will have and, and I think we can handle the, the funding through the normal 2013, uh, 2014 budget process now, when, when we start that in a few months. So I, I don't think we have to take action today on specifically how it would be funded, but we, we do need to take action on whether or not to approve the, the bids and if there are any of these alternates that, that you might take issue with. Does anybody have a problem with the alternates that they've recommended that we accept and the alternates that they've recommended not be accepted?
Well, I don't know that I would second guess you guys, but I, I do find myself wondering, are we going to paint vehicles in this facility?
No, I'm, sorry, Commissioner Jackson, the painting the vehicle bay is not a bay to paint vehicles. It is actually painting the structure that the vehicles will reside.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, I was, that is clear.
You had me fooled.
It's easier to maintain at that point if it's, if it's painted and...
I, I think it really is worth reiterating for the public that however we fund this building, it will be paid for at the end of next year, so that's a good thing.
I think we could say it should be paid by the time it's fully constructed, assuming we get sales tax collections as we anticipate, so. There are no problems then with the, the alternates that they, as they've recommended? Okay. Mr. Coling, what would be the appropriate motion here to act on this item?
Mr. President, because there are contracts that will have to be entered into with each of these contractors and we'll need to negotiate those, my recommended motion for you would be to accept the bid amounts from Shingabe, Central Mechanical and Burger Electric with the recommended alternates and authorize city staff to enter into negotiations with each of the parties.
I would make that motion.
We have the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Hearing none then will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuttgart?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Thank you and, uh, thank you for it coming in under your estimate. Okay, that brings us to item D. This is an RFQ for Qualified Development Team and, uh, Mr. Kessel, are you introducing this item? Can you tell us more about that?
Thank you, President Johnson, Commission. You just...
of these contractors and we'll need to negotiate those, my recommended motion for you would be to accept the bid amounts from Shingleby, Central Mechanical, and Burger Electric with the recommended alternates and authorize city staff to enter into negotiations with each of the parties.
I would make that motion.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Harry Nun then will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Thank you. And thank you for coming in under your estimate. That brings us to item D. This is an RFQ for Qualified Development Team. And Mr. Kessel, are you introducing this item? Can you tell us more about that?
Thank you, President Johnson. Commission, you just heard an hour's presentation prior to our commission meeting on exactly this project. The idea is to issue an RFQ and receive then thoughts and ideas. And if you look at the last page of the RFQ process, it's probably the most essential. The first couple are mostly legalese. The goal, and I might revise this just slightly, is to revitalize the Dickinson downtown area to include housing, retail, and parking development. I would include office space in that goal statement as well. But the requirements then are to provide plans, thoughts, ideas on how to emphasize housing in the downtown area. Once you have the adequate noses in the downtown, then retail follows. But it would be providing then the city of Dickinson with that plan, identifying sites that are located within our downtown core and potential projects to fill those sites based upon the goals that are set out before you this evening. It does also then outline the experience and qualifications that we'd like to see in anybody who does respond to the RFQ, the terms, and then some criteria for selection. This was largely based upon the city of Minot when they issued their RFQ to engage a downtown revitalization process. So we relied heavily upon their RFQ process for this one. So with that, that would conclude my introduction.
So RFQ stands for Request for Qualifications and not Request for?
Correct. Instead of a Request for Proposal. So they would, the firms that are interested in working on this project would simply let us know what their intentions are and then why they think they're qualified to do such work in the downtown area. And then we would select, based upon those submissions, which one we think does have the best qualifications to lead the downtown visioning process.
And that's what they'd be doing, is putting together a vision for downtown if, once we select the successful candidate?
Correct. It's a similar procedure as our comprehensive planning process. We did an RFQ for the planning process, selected the firm we thought would do the best represent us and create the comprehensive plan, and then they created the plan itself.
Do you have a, an idea of, you know, what it will cost to do this planning process? I mean, we know what it costs for the comprehensive plan.
It won't be anywhere near the cost for the comprehensive planning process. This is meant to be an appendix, so to speak, an addendum to the comprehensive planning process. My estimate would be something similar as we've paid NDSU, who is a subcontractor on that process. So between, I hate to guess, but...
Okay, but don't guess then.
Okay.
But I, you answered my question. But you would think it would be well within what we paid for the current comprehensive plan?
Oh, yes. Most definitely.
That's good enough for me. Are there other comments or questions? And what you're asking us to approve is this document submitted to us that then would go out to those who are interested in responding to it?
That's correct, President Johnson. And then that selection process would involve either the commission as a whole or members of the commission to select the team. And then I would defer to Attorney Coling to know if that team would then have to be approved by the full commission.
Mr. President, Commissioners, I think you can do that whichever way you would deem appropriate. If you want to select Commissioners to be on that approval team, you can do so. In any event, the recommendation would come back to this body and you would have the final authority to either accept that recommendation or to go some other direction.
Tell me a little bit more about what the scope of this work will be. Do we, do we think we will end up with some array of potential projects and the cost for those projects? Do you think we'll see that as a?
Commissioner Jackson, I do believe that we will see an array of projects that will be recommended. I'm not sure if we'll get down to the point of where they'll actually put together costs of those projects. As you heard this evening, the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, is the surface parking lots. The city of Dickinson does own some of those surface parking lots, but not all. So it'd be difficult for an estimate, I think, of sale to happen. But they would provide projects for, I'm assuming, each of those surface parking lots, resulting in a residential office or mixed-use structure or parking, parking structure of some kind.
Well, I think whoever is ultimately chosen will be negotiating fee and scope. And I would hope that we write that scope so that we do try to move that far.
Okay.
With cost ranges, maybe break down a potential revenue sources and those kinds of things.
We can certainly, it's a good suggestion.
Other comments, questions?
I think we're at the point at this time with all the work that's been done to approve the RFQ. This doesn't cost us anything, one of the things that doesn't cost us anything. I think it's a step that we've got to take now and push this thing along a little farther and see what comes back.
Thank you. Mr. Steiner, anybody else? I agree with Commissioner Steiner. I think in the special commission meeting that we held right prior to this meeting, Mr. Reddick said, essentially said it's not too early to start planning even if we may not have the funding in place right now for it. We can start the planning and be prepared to act once, you know, funding is more available. And we have a downtown area that I think has a lot of character to it, has a lot of potential. And if we put together a good plan, even if it takes 15, 20 years to completely realize that plan, that's fine. So I guess I would be in favor of moving forward with this, too.
And they have to have the bids in by March 29th, is what that is?
Sorry, Commissioner, I minimized my box, but there is a date in there.
March 29, 11 o'clock.
There, thank you.
All proposals with original signature and five additional copies.
Yep, thank you.
Is there a motion regarding this item then?
So moved to approve?
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Further discussion? Harry Nun will vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move along to item E. This is an ordinance for vacation accruals, and Mr. Coling will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. This ordinance would modify the city's human resources code to allow the city the option of granting additional vacation hours to certain executive-level employees upon their hire. Ordinarily, vacation hours only accrue for city employees at the rate of five days per year during the employee's first year of hire. As the city has sought to hire a number of executive-level positions, we have seen it necessary to provide some additional vacation time as an inducement to employment. This grant or any grant of additional vacation hours would only be at the discretion of the city administrator and upon your concurrence as a board of city commissioners. For your record-keeping, this would be ordinance 1499. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction. Are there any comments or questions by Commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance? If you would, just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? No comments from city commissioners? Is there a motion regarding first reading?
I'll make the motion for first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion?
You know, the only discussion I would have is that I, I think there's a reality here with these kinds of situations. And it puts us in a poor position if we can't do things like this to attract good employees.
I would agree. We're, you know, trying to fill these critical positions with people that have tenure. And people that have tenure and experience typically have accrued an amount of vacation with their past employment. And to ask them to start completely over in our system, that sometimes can be the make or break in negotiating that position. And I think this is just maybe another arrow in our quiver that we need to have. It doesn't mean that we will utilize it. It's going to be on a case-by-case basis. But if there is a strong candidate and this is the last thing that we need to be able to negotiate to get that tenured employee to come to Dickinson, I think we want to have it in our arsenal.
Thank you, Mr. Altman. Well-stated.
Commissioner, or President Johnson, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I think Commissioner Altman's has summed it up very, very well. I just want to mention that in the type of positions that we've recruited lately, the minimum experience level that we look at is seven years. And so as somebody has been employed for at least seven years, they're coming to us with vacations that exceed two, three, sometimes four weeks. And so this is one of those tools, or as Commissioner Altman's put it, a quiver, an arrow in our quiver that we can use. I certainly recommend approval this evening.
So anybody else? Not, we do have the motion and the second. So we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to item F, which is the, involves a state revolving fund loan for the wastewater treatment plant. And I think Mr. Coling is also introducing this item.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners, this resolution provides city authorization for the $4.5 million loan for the new wastewater treatment facility through the state revolving fund. The SOF loan has been approved by the state of North Dakota. Interest rate on the loan is fixed for 20 years at 2% plus a 0.5% administration fee. The city can then draw upon the loan funds as needed for project costs. The, I believe a preliminary amortization schedule was included with your packets as well. The schedule that was included assumes that the city would draw on the full amount of the loan that immediately at closing. That will not be the case. We are allowed to draw funds from that loan amount as project costs happen. But once the loan is fully funded, then we'll get a full and final amortization schedule for the loan. There are several other documents, closing certificates, the loan agreement, the bond documents, that will need to be signed by the city in order to complete the loan transaction. And adoption of this resolution would empower Mr. Johnson and Mr. Kessel to have the necessary authority to complete those loan documents and to close the loan. City staff would recommend approval. For your record-keeping, this resolution would be 09-2013. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coling. A question I have, when you say the interest rate is 2% plus a 0.5% administrative fee, does that make the interest rate really 2.5% or is the administrative fee a one-time fee?
It's effectively 2.5%.
2.5%, okay. Any other questions, comments?
Just the amount for clarification. I heard you say 4.5 million, and it's substantially higher.
A little bit more than that, 40.5 million.
Any other questions or comments or clarifications? Is there a motion regarding resolution 09-2013?
I'll make the motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Harry Nun will go ahead and vote then. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the city administrators' reports. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson. My first report this evening is to introduce you to our new Public Works Director, Mr. Gary Zurov, seated at the other end of the dais. Mr. Zurov comes to us from Glendive, Montana, where he's been the Public Works Director there for several years. He was the Assistant Director prior. So he comes to us with a great deal of experience and a location very close to our own. And that is not, not traditionally, when you look at our hires lately at the executive level, our museum coordinator came from Pennsylvania, our planners both come from Missouri and Florida, and our Assistant City Engineer from Illinois. So it's kind of nice to hire a hometown boy or as close as we're appearing to get to a hometown boy in Mr. Zurov. In his role as Public Works Director, he'll supervise the water, which will include water, wastewater, and stormwater, streets, and sanitation, which includes both collection and landfill departments. So with that, I yield the floor to Mr. Zurov, and he can give you a rundown of what he brings to the table.
President Johnson and Commissioners, it's an honor to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with you and the staff of Dickinson on all the public works projects. It's a great opportunity, I think, to be part of the growth and the multiple projects going on in this area, and looking forward to working hard on those projects.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Is this your first day on the job?
This is my sixth day on the job.
Sixth day on the?
Yes. My second day on the job, I attended the Public Works Building bid opening. And then I did have a tour of the new wastewater, water reclamation facility. And I don't know how many times that a new Public Works Director, in the second day on the job, be at the bid opening of a multimillion-dollar public works facility. So that was exciting.
So are you the reason it came in under the architect's?
I will take it.
Yes.
If I may.
How many times we hire someone and give them a $16 million new building?
No, I don't, don't expect this to happen every year.
All right. Okay.
Don't forget the $40 million wastewater treatment. So it's really 56 million.
That's true, too. An expensive guy.
Well, there's a lot going on here, as you're well aware. I've been literally a next-door neighbor to this. And I'm sure Glendive has its own energy impacts going on there, too.
There has been. It's not as, of course, not as big as Dickinson, but there's a lot going on in this whole area.
Well, we're glad you're here, and we're looking forward to working with you for the next several years.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments there, questions? Okay, Mr. Kessel, we'll let you continue.
Thank you. The last item that I have then is just a quick legislative update. Obviously, we follow a great many bills, and we're approaching crossover at the legislative session. And so I just wanted to give you a brief update of some of those bills we're following. I'm going to start with Senate Bill 2358. This is a bill that would decrease the state sales tax from 5% to 4.5%. It does make up for some of the differences in state aid distribution. That isn't the concern necessarily with the bill. The bigger concern is that it would limit political subdivisions to a 2% sales tax. We could not go over that. Certain communities already have over 2% of local option sales tax. Those would be grandfathered in, and as soon as they termed out, they would no longer be able to renew that sales tax. So although we're not at 2%, we could be, and it does eliminate the option for us. us if we wanted to go beyond. And I think that would be unfortunate. Our citizens vote on any local option sales tax, and it's hard to take that right away from them. If they see a project that they want to see built, such as the West River Community Center, I think it'd be unfortunate to not give them that option. So, we are monitoring that bill. The next is-
Has that passed the Senate?
No, not as of yet. They did vote on that on Friday, on Valentine's Day, actually. And so, I've not heard the result of the final disposition out of committee.
Okay. So, it's a Senate bill, and it's been heard, and it's gone to the Senate floor?
It's been heard by committee, and it'll go to the Senate floor. I don't believe it's been heard by the Senate floor yet.
It hasn't been voted on by the Senate, then, yet?
No, I don't believe so.
You don't know what the committee recommendation was?
Um...
If it came out recommended, do pass or do not pass?
That was the vote that happened on the 14th, was that committee recommendation. We, of course, said we'd like to see a do-not-pass come out of committee. I've not followed up to find out if that's exactly what happened.
Okay.
The next is House Bill 1468. This is one that's regarding MITA bonds. As you can imagine, there's literally hundreds of bills we try to follow, and this one would affect the MITA bond process. We don't generally use MITA bonds, although just at the last commission meeting, the city of Valley City is issuing MITA bonds for a project that includes some Dickinson projects. So, we were brought into the process, even though we haven't issued them ourselves. House Bill 1269 is a bill that has been passed. It's actually waiting for the governor's signature. It passed the House and the Senate, and it provides some emergency funding to Southwest Water and other water districts. Southwest Water was slated for $21 million so that they could begin some of their projects that ultimately would assist Dickinson in getting more water to our community. I have not followed up to find out if the governor passed that, but I do believe he will or intends to do so. The next is Senate Bill 2313. This is one that would allow cities and counties to extend or expand public funds to retain a lobbyist. We're simply monitoring this bill. We've not taken a position on it. Certainly, if the city commission would like to let me know what their thoughts are, I could then share those. But we're simply monitoring this bill at this point in time. The next is House Bill 1145. This is related to fire departments. Currently, there's a premium that's collected from insurance companies. 100% of those dollars used to be paid, returned to fire departments or rural fire districts. The, excuse me, the legislature several years ago restricted that to 50%. They retained 50% and then used that for statewide purposes. This bill would return that funding to its original 100% amount. This is, of course, being followed, and a lot of bills are being followed by individual department heads as well, and their associations that they represent. The last one that I want to kind of talk about, then, tonight, is 1358. You heard me reference that earlier this evening in regards to the public works. I did provide you a breakdown of that bill that was provided by the North Dakota Oil, excuse me, Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties. This appears to be the vehicle by which Western North Dakota will be funded. It essentially sets up for oil hub cities. The first thing it does is define an oil hub city, which is important, because the definition would include a population of 12,500 or more, and at least 1% of private employment engaged in the mining industry. The reason this is important is if it's adopted as it's defined, it would likely mean that there'll be four oil hub cities rather than three. Mandan could join the list of an oil hub city. They currently are not. But it is nice to have that definition. The Oil Impact Grant Program defines it as any community over 10,000. And I believe there's a geography requirement as well. So, there may be a point in time where some of the cities in Western North Dakota do grow in population, where that distinction between 10,000 and 12,500 does become important. What's important about this bill is it generally returns, the state of North Dakota has returned about 11% of the 11.5% taxation that they receive, the revenues from that, back to Western North Dakota. If you look at other states that have oil dollars or other natural resources, they're returning much higher percentages. This bill would effectively bring back about 30% to 33% of the taxes collected back to Western North Dakota. So, it's a huge improvement over what's occurring today. And it returns those to a great many political subdivisions, not just cities. Cities would, oil hub cities would receive reimbursement based on a formula of $750,000 per percentage of private employment engaged in the mining industry. That's important, because our current percentage would bring about $12.7 million to Dickinson. But the other, there's other pieces of this legislation that would broaden the definition of what a mining industry is. Currently, it only includes strictly mining. It doesn't include the ancillary transportation network that's provided or others. Presuminably, there's dollars in here that the, dedicated to North Dakota Job Service, that they could expand then and correlate some of these jobs that haven't been considered in previous estimates now would be. So, if that does happen, our employment in that mining industry is likely to go higher than it is today, which would then bring, of course, more funding to our community. It also brings oil hub city school districts on a similar formula, but funded at $250,000 per percentage point rather than $750,000. So, again, significant dollars brought to the school districts and the city. It does increase the oil and gas impact grant program from 100 to 150 million dollars. The negative side of that is it eliminates 35% that has been reserved oil hub cities that's in current law. So, the $2.9 million that you saw tonight in the public works building funding would not be a guarantee anymore if this passes. We are suggesting an amendment that would retain that 35%. The city of Minot is supporting us in that amendment request, but it is not part of the legislation as it exists today. I think that kind of sums up at least the high points that I wanted to share with you this evening. I will say that the governor's proposal, which was an alternate to this bill, did not, had a do-not-pass, unanimous do-not-pass come out of committee. So, this is likely the bill that will, as I said earlier, be the vehicle for funding. But when it goes to conference committee, which it most likely will, that's where all of these items will be debated, and hopefully, some of the governor's proposals will come in, back into play in this bill. This does not provide the $60 million in airport funding that the governor did have in the oil impact grant program. And in the governor's program, it retained that 35% allocation to oil hub cities in that grant program. Again, we'd like to see that concept retained here. So, those are just a few of the bills that I wanted to mention this evening. If you have others that you'd like us to follow, or have an opinion, especially on the lobbying bill, I would certainly like to hear that, so that we can make sure that our legislators are aware of our desires in that regard. I do email our legislative team with regularity. Did take advantage of the coffee with the legislators this past weekend to, again, advocate for our position. So, with that, that would conclude my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Kessel? You know, I, just on the last bill that he spoke on, 1358, and the funding, if you think of this in terms of bienniums, current biennium ends June 30. And we've received, or by the time the impact money comes in here, what's been committed to us, I think, is, I think it's either 12.1 or 12.3 million dollars. So, in round numbers, we're getting about $6 million a year in oil impact funds. Well, tonight, we took action on funding or borrowing money for the wastewater treatment fund. It appears, you know, we have about a $40 million shortfall this biennium on projects that we're doing. Well, now, when you fast-forward into the next biennium, depending upon how much of the comprehensive plan we actually implement, if we receive roughly $12.5 million a year, or $25 million in the next biennium, we have projects that I think are recommended to us, just in wastewater and water alone, that probably are near $100 million. So, we could be looking at a very significant shortfall. And we have projects that we absolutely have to do when it comes to water distribution and wastewater. We just can't say no to those. So, that's the message we've been trying to bring to the legislative body, that Dickinson is facing significant impact. We've essentially gone from a community of 16,000 people to probably about 25,000 people. So, you're building, it's like building a new community of 9,000 people, and it takes more than $12 million of money to fund the infrastructure. And I fear we're being significantly underfunded as the legislation now appears. So, I'm hoping that as it gets over into the Senate side, that amendments and changes will be considered that would bring more funding to a community like Dickinson. So, it's very important legislation to us.
President Johnson, one of the ways I try to put that in perspective, when you talk about our population gain of around 9,000 people, is I try to relate it to another community. And Wapperton is a community of about 8,500. And we did that, essentially added that population of that whole community in about two and a half years. If you would go to that community itself and look at how many streets and water, towers, and underground piping, you can imagine, we've had to do the equivalent of that in a very short period of time, hence the oil impact that we're receiving.
The only thing I would ask, you know, whether it's this conference committee or any of the other efforts that are going on, if you see the names of legislators who are involved, to get us those names, I'm sure that we don't have to, I'm sure you're in close communication with Western lawmakers. But I know some from the East may need conversation more than the ones from the West. So, if you can get us some of those names, we may know some of those people.
I think, Mr. Jackson, the key names are, especially, once we have crossover here, are really going to be on the Senate Appropriations Committee. Just look those names up, and if you know senators on the Appropriations Committee, is making sure that we're telling our story to them. Okay, any other comments or questions for Mr. Kessel? All right, we'll move to Tab 5, Public Safety, and we'll hear from Chief Seavock of Fire Department.
President Johnson, Commissioners, included with the information this evening in addition to my report, you have some information on ISO's fire suppression rating schedule reinvented and revised. I just wanted to draw your attention on Page 1 to Paragraph 4. The changes are positive changes, in our view. The new schedule continues to evaluate three major categories of fire suppression in rating a community: fire department, emergency communications, and water supply. But now, in addition to those three, it includes a new community risk reduction section that recognizes the community effort in fire prevention, and public education, and fire inspection, and gives credit for that. And Dickinson having that program in place will benefit from these changes. And in addition, there's other changes that I thought you might find interesting. That's why that report is included for you. And for the January 2013 activities of the Dickinson Fire Department, we tied last year in number of responses, 33 responses, compared to 33 last year in January, compared to 28 in 2011. The type of responses has changed dramatically, however. So far, year-to-date, we have four general alarm fires, four structural fires that involve the entire department. Last year, in the entire year, we had six general alarm fires. We're already at four. Fifteen alert crew responses, month of January alone. We're seeing many more actual fire calls, for some reason, at the start of this year than we've ever seen before in the same timeframe. Hopefully, that's, it's not a trend, and hopefully, that we can report next month and the month after, and prove that it's not a trend and that that's changing. Fire prevention and public education, we had 170 total inspections the month of January. We had staff affected by injury and by flu, and we sure noticed when they weren't on the street. But still, we managed 69 routine inspections, 50 follow-up, 13 construction, 38 miscellaneous, which again includes those fire suppression system, alarm tests, fire drills, and complaint investigations. January activities, our regular training included auto extrication and rapid intervention team training. Special operations training was auto extrication also. Leadership conference, which was in Bismarck on the 12th, we had six fire department staff, including several volunteers, attend that training. And that concludes my report for the month of January.
Thank you, Chief. Are there comments or questions for Chief Seavock?
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Chief Dossinger of the Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I have before you the January 2013 monthly report. I will start out talking about some traffic accidents. We had a total of 143 accidents within our community last month. Five of those were injury related, and we did have 30 hit-and-run accidents. We did conduct 547 traffic stops. There were a total of 228 warnings issued and 491 citations issued. Kind of a five-year comparison for the month of January. You can see that we were down compared to total calls compared to last year, although we have, can see that there was kind of a steadily incline of calls leading up to 2012. And now, it has tapered off a little bit in the month of January for 2013.
Well, last year, it looks like it stands out as being extraordinarily high. I mean, if you took that out, the trend is still up. Do you recall any special circumstances a year ago?
You know, I don't. Last year, for the month of January, we did, we're fully staffed for the month of January last year. For this year, we have been down five officers. That hurts us a little bit as far as our proactive activities. And each shift right now does have at least one officer through the FTO program, and basically, each shift has two brand-new officers on that shift. So, it hurts us as far as our proactive activities with our traffic numbers, most definitely.
So, like, a traffic stop counts as a call for service?
That's correct.
So, when somebody runs a stop sign, they're calling for service?
Well, it's a call of action for us.
Call for action.
Exactly.
Okay.
Kind of picking out some of the more serious crimes for the month of January compared to last year. Last year, in 2012, these are actual arrests. These are not calls for service in which we get called to. These are actual arrests. Simple assaults, we had three for 2012 and 2013. Domestic violence, simple assault, we were up this year in January. Eight this year compared to two last year. Domestic violence, aggravated assaults, one last year, one this year. Aggravated assault is where there's significant bodily injury or there's been a weapon involved. DUI, actual physical control, we had 20 last year. Those numbers were down to 12 this year. Cocaine and methamphetamine arrests, five last year, seven this year. Drug paraphernalia arrests, 10 last year, nine this year. Marijuana possession, three for both years. Keep in mind that those numbers don't include those of the drug task force in which we have a member on. And this year, we did have- And this year, we did have seven prostitution-related arrests in the month of January. Training, these are some of the training activities that we had. We did have recertification for our tasers. Active shooter training, classroom portion, we continue. We are beginning the, beginning the portion in which we actually get into the schools this month and next month. We did have clandestine lab recertification. We did have three officers attend leadership training in Bismarck. And we did, did attend a job fair in Alexandria, Minnesota, in which we sent two recruiters. This is kind of an example of our recruiting poster and brochure that we are handing out. It contains our core values of integrity, respect, teamwork, and courage. It kind of touches on some of the divisions that we have, and we hopefully attract some people to give us a call and see what we're made out of. Are there any questions?
I have one. Chief Dossinger, on the accidents, is it certain thing, like following too close? I notice that there's, somebody is on the back of my car all the time, and I'm doing the speed limit, they're not.
Well, I think, yeah, I think there's a number of causes of accidents. Following too close, distracted driving, people utilizing their cell phones or texting or driving is big. And, you know, there's a lot of people right now that are disobeying traffic, traffic control devices such as red lights. I'm sure most of you guys see that in your personal vehicles at times. People don't necessarily stop on a red light. They will go through it, you know, and we are trying to curb that driving behavior.
And then the hit-and-runs, there's plenty of those.
You know, there's a lot of traffic in our parking lots of Walmart, you know, the Prairie Hills Mall and other business places, and unfortunately, a lot of those hit-and-run accidents occur in those parking lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, when you talk about distracted driving and so on, what about the drivers that are distracted from other locations on the streets and so on? You see them out there at tax time, you see them on new openings, and so on. What I'm getting to, I mean, their main job is to stand on that corner and distract you to see what they're trying to promote. Do you know, do other communities have a 100-foot distance from corners, or do they have anything that addresses that situation?
You know, I'm not aware of other ordinances in other communities, but I can certainly look that up for you.
Have any of your accidents, people come out and say, "I was distracted by this person over here"? It'd be interesting to know.
I'm not aware of any at this time.
Couple of questions. Has it been long enough that you can tell if the compensation changes we made are helping your recruiting?
You know, I think they have made a difference. We do have five openings that we've just gone through the hiring process on. Of those five openings, we just hired one officer that completed the background and the polygraph test. He'll be starting soon with us. Of the other four openings, three of those have accepted the officers, and we're beginning the background portion of it, and one has not got in touch with us yet if they're going to actually accept the position, so.
Okay. The other thing, Chief, I get asked occasionally about the uptick in drug traffic, if, you know, how appreciable it is. Can you give us a sense for that over the last couple of years? Is it, is it a pretty significant difference than what we saw a couple of years ago with illegal drugs?
It has increased, and that has to deal with, it coincides with the transient workforce that we're seeing in our community. A lot of people, you know, they maybe work two weeks on here, maybe go home two weeks, and unfortunately, a lot of the people are bringing that material back with them. It has increased, and I will bring a report from the Drug Task Force with me next time that can kind of present some of the numbers to you.
Okay, that'd be interesting.
How are you coming on your canine funding?
You know, as you know, we do have one canine that's kind of nearing retirement with some hip issues that we are going to replace, and we have been receiving some donations for replacement of that canine from some of the businesses in town. And that dog hopefully will be ready around May.
Okay. Just to let the public know, they cost $40,000, don't they?
No. No, not.
What are they?
That dog that's completely trained, it also includes the training for the handler, it'd be right around $16,000.
How much, 16?
Right around 16.
Okay. Better than what I was told.
Anything else for the Chief?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nothing from engineering, planning, Mr. Cretan, anything you'd like to highlight?
Mr. President, Commissioners, yes. Before I get started to talk about the building permit report, I do want to bring your attention that, to your right, we have updated the zoning map. You'll notice that the colors have changed to be more reflective of the standard land use colors. Also, it includes our latest boundary and the properties that we recently annexed. So, I think that the map that we had prior to that was several years old. So, now, we have an updated map, and I want to thank Loretta Marsick for putting that together, and it took, took a lot of time to tape it back together and to make it into a functional map. And then, to my right, we have our future land use map. They'll be part of the comprehensive plan. We've updated that, and that will be coming forward as part of the comprehensive plan on March 4th. So, now, we have updated maps for the public to be able to look at. Also, I want to mention to the public, you know, that I'll be watching, and also to the Commission, remind you of our joint planning, Planning Commission-City Commission meeting for the adoption of our comprehensive plan, March 4th. Will start early. Will start at 3:30 again, and we'll hear, we'll hear a presentation from KLJ, and then a public comment for the adoption of our comprehensive plan. From that point, we'll ask the Planning Commission if they will provide a recommendation for approval. And then, subsequent to that, it'll be left up to the Commission to decide if you want to have first reading of your comprehensive plan. The development activity report, the totals on that, if you've noticed, are significantly lower than last year. I think that's, looking at our totals, they are pretty typical of what they should be for a normal winter. Last year was a typical winter. We didn't really have a winter, and that's reflective of the totals that we had in the different categories. Just to give you an update for this year, commercial structures, we had one as of in January compared to zero that we had last year. Single-family structures, we had four in January compared to 25 of last year. And total housing units, we had four compared to 193. The majority, the vast majority of the 193 were multifamily apartment complexes that came through early. That being said, the permanent values are not, are about a third of what they were from last year. Last year, at this time, we were at 6.1 million, and our values were roughly a little over 2 million. So, you know, though our figures are showing lower than last year, the phone calls, the anticipation and development activity, the meetings that we have are still active. I'm kind of enjoying this little lull. I've been here for two years, and this is the first time that I've had a little bit of a breather, some of my, some of my staff as well, on the building inspection side. But we have noticed in the last couple of days to a week, that things are starting to heat up for the springtime. So, I would anticipate our totals would be similar to what they were last year, even though we're starting out slower than we were last year. And that's just due to the normal winter that we've had this year. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Cretan?
I think, I have a question. Do you think it's because we don't have very many lots for sale right now that it's slower?
When I, you know, when we look at the lot inventory, I think we have a decent number of lots. The question is for people to actually develop them. Are there lots available on the open market? Well, we've had developers that come in and bought out 50 to 100 of some of the subdivisions that we've had from last year, and I've talked to the original developers of the subdivision, they've already sold out those lots. Instead of there being ones and twos and threes that are out there, people come through and buy multiple lots at a time. So, I think we still have plenty of lots out there. It's just the key is, the same that we have for multifamily entitlements, they just need to build them. So, I think our inventory is definitely there. We have enough land to be able to move forward with respect to things. And the activity that we're starting to see in our Planning Commission for tomorrow's Planning Commission and also for the next couple, where if the projects move forward, as I anticipate, we'll have a significant number of lots, or first part of the summer as well.
Thank you.
Couple of things, couple of comments, maybe. I know Mr. Cretan and I have had a conversation about the possibility of extending our territorial area. We made a couple of large annexations last year, and we've not extended the ETA since we did those annexations. I was able to have an informal conversation with a couple of county commissioners who agree that it makes sense we look at that. I think they'd like to see us at one of their meetings to talk about it a little bit, especially the one to the west. I'm not sure it makes sense to take more ETA to the east, but to the west, where we know a lot of development's going to take place. I would hope we could do that yet this winter sometime, you know, the next month or two, something like that. No?
Sorry, Commissioner Jackson, I just had mentioned that, too. Attorney Coling, that we should do exactly that.
Okay. Okay, and the other thing I know you and I have talked about too, but with some of the dormant subdivisions that we've approved, and we've talked about trying to take some action to, to light a fire under some of those. It's really good for our community to get those subdivisions that are really infill, to make them active. And if we think we're okay legally, we need to try to do something.
Mr. Jackson, Commissioners, Mr. Kessel and I have talked about that, and that is something that we are researching and putting together a process for that. There are some, some legal ramifications to that. You're affecting values of land and plots that have been approved, and the people have spent money getting to the approval stage. So, we want to be careful about how we do that and protect the city, but we agree with the goal that it's important to get those dormant subdivisions developed in a timely manner.
Other comments or questions? I asked Mrs. Deucart earlier if she would comment on the housing market, what she and others in the realtor business are experiencing, as long as we're on planning. Could you, would you be willing to comment?
Yes. Depending on Mother Nature in the next three, four months, we will probably run out of inventory. I mean, we have seen an influx of people coming here to work, and it is, they aren't all oil-related. You know, there are different people coming with different jobs and starting, wanting to start their own businesses, and we are turning them over pretty quick, even as we sell, we keep listing, but they are going.
So, you're saying kind of a resurgence in demand at the end of the year, that there was kind of a lull?
November and December was very slow, but we were ready for a breather, just like Mr. Cretan said, and now, starting the beginning of January, it just was, and we just thought it would slow down, you know, in the colder months, and it hasn't. And, you know, we, we show all year round, and we sell all year round, but this year's been extremely high in January and February.
Thank you.
If I could add to that, Commissioner Deucart, I mean, we have probably four or five plots that have received final plot approval that have not been able to finish their, their infrastructure due to the normal winter that we've had. Last year, they were able to move forward and, you know, put the roads in and so forth. We have several of them that, that will be coming on. I would anticipate getting, getting their infrastructure in the first part of the spring. So, we should have a, you know, at least 100-plus lots that will be coming on very quickly when the thaw, when the thaw happens here. They just need to finish up the last of their infrastructure, pavement of roads, that they can't do at this point.
Good. We want to keep going.
Any other comments along that line? All right. We'll move to Commissioner reports. I do have one item that I'd like to report on and discuss. It has to do with the city attorney. Several weeks ago, the city attorney contacted me and also contacted Mr. Kessel, and informed us that he was a finalist in a job or position outside the city. And Mr. Kessel and I discussed the matter and concluded that if the city attorney was interested in leaving the firm that he's with for another job, that perhaps he'd have an interest in, in working directly with the city. In our view, and I think you all share the view, that city attorney does a really good job for us, and that we would like to retain him. And so, Mr. Kessel did approach the city attorney and said, you know, "Would you be interested in joining the city as a city employee and working as city attorney if you're considering a move"? We did get an affirmative answer to that, and so, I guess what I would seek is permission from the Commission that Mr. Kessel and I be empowered to negotiate with Mr. Coling and see if we could come back at, at our next meeting with a contract or a proposal that would bring him to the city. So, I guess, you know, you can either empower us formally or informally to do that. If we would see this position being outside the civil service position, it, it would require an employment contract similar to what we have with Mr. Kessel. And if, if you would concur, we would try to negotiate that employment contract, bring it here for your action, your approval or disapproval.
Mr. President, I, I think it would be really good to explore that possibility. We have so much going on right now. I presume that, that that in-house position could be involved with some of the municipal court parts of our responsibility as well. I know that we were unsuccessful hiring an assistant for you, Mr. Kessel, and I know this position would not take the place of that position, but I can certainly see some I'd be very interested in exploring the possibility.
Well, I would agree, and I would say that one of the reoccurring themes that we have as a Commission and as a city, and it's apparent with the legislative session this year, is that we need strong voices pleading the case of Dickinson and our need for funding moving forward. Sean has done an excellent job. I think having another person that can mirror that or be another spokesperson for the community would, would bode well for us. The other side of that is, we've been very fortunate with Mr. Coling as our city attorney. He has done a good job for us. As a community, when you hire out for your city attorney, especially in the smaller towns, you don't always get maybe the best representation, especially in the smaller towns around here. And so, we've had good representation, and I think that we've moved as a city to a size where it would warrant. And I think when you look at the cost of having a city attorney versus what we're paying currently, I think there would actually end up being some cost savings in the end, too. And so, then, not only do you get a good city attorney, you actually probably have some cost savings, and you have another voice for the community, and those are all important factors to look at, in my mind.
I would have to agree, and I think, too, as an attorney, we utilize Mr. Coling a lot, and it's hard to have another job on the side and, and, you know, do your professional day job as well as work for us, so I think it would work out really well.
I'd be in favor of Mayor and Mr. Kessel working with Mr. Coling.
Thank you. Mr. Kessel and I, of course, have, we've discussed this frequently, and in addition to the normal city attorney responsibilities, we would, I think Mr. Kessel would recommend that our Human Resource Department become part of the legal group. We would also, I think he would recommend that Government Affairs become part of that. And there are- And there are certain organizations, both outside the city and within the city, that the city attorney would be active in. For example, one organization that we rely on a lot, but we're not the best at always attending the meetings, is the League of Cities. And so might say to, to the city attorney, this is going to be your organization, you know. You, you make sure that you make your annual meetings and other meetings, that kind of thing. Which, right now, I know as mayor and city administrator, we're, we haven't been as faithful being there. But they're an important organization, and Dickinson should be there. There's other outside organizations, for example, have to do with water, that either our city engineer, our city administrator, or city attorney, you know, somebody has to be actively involved there. So we would see the job encompassing more than just the day-to-day city attorney duties that, that we now have. And Mr. Jackson, you bring up an excellent point in terms of prosecution. You know, I'm sure Mr. Coling would, would not take the place of the current prosecutor, but would, would certainly be able to assist and maybe make that more cost-effective for the city, too, right now. So I mean, I, I think there's a number of things that we would like to, to talk to Mr. Coling about in regards to the position. Since we did make an offer on the deputy city administrator position that wasn't accepted, Mr. Kessel at the last meeting said, you know, he's rethinking that, thinking maybe we take that position down a notch and, and maybe make, like director of finance and administration. Of course, you'd remove HR from it and probably not designate it as the number-two position in the, in the organization, city organization. So that's, I think, these two actions are kind of interrelated. I think, you know, you, you don't make a final decision on that. We can see if we can negotiate an acceptable package with Mr. Coling that is acceptable to the commission and to Mr. Coling. I think Commissioner Altman's made an excellent point, too, that where we're at today compared to where we were a couple of years ago when we looked at this issue, we're certainly spending a lot more on legal services today than we were two years ago. Two years ago, it wasn't quite cost-justifiable. We're likely at the point where it is cost-justifiable to have our own position there now. So I think what I've heard from all of you, it's okay for us to go ahead and, and see if we can negotiate something that we could bring, or negotiate an agreement that we could bring back to you two weeks from now for, for your consideration. We'll, we'll do that then. Are there any other comments by commissioners on any other issues?
Just a quick one, Mayor Johnson. It's for the public that said they didn't have the opportunity, didn't know about the truck bypass meetings. Per you giving me the date, it's tomorrow at 2:00 PM, right?
I think there's, yeah, a public hearing that's, that the North Dakota DOT is, is sponsoring at, I think it's 2:00 Thursday afternoon at the old golf course clubhouse. I forget what, what we call that building now. But Mr. Kessel, it, I got a formal invite through Outlook from the DOT some time ago, and I think I saw your name on the list, too. Do you have the same meeting?
They call it the Heart River Retreat Center.
Okay.
And it is the, a teen center, it's often been referred to in the past.
Yeah.
That is the location. I have a different time than, than what you have.
What do you have?
I have 5:30, but.
5:30?
On Thursday.
But I could be incorrect on that, we'll have to verify that.
Well, it's, yeah, on my calendar, I know it's showing up as 2:00.
Can you verify that and get us each an email, Kretan?
We'll certainly do that.
Thank you.
One, I think it's an important point that you bring up, Shirley, is that it is a DOT project. The city was presented three options to look at and to give our input into, but certainly wasn't us that chose the route and selected this DOT project to come online in the next year or so. And so that would be, if you have some critical input, if you're affected by the proposed truck route, certainly that would be the avenue that you'd want to voice your opinion and that you would have, make the most impact rather than, you know, approaching us who are, are basically an end product of the DOT project that's going on.
Yeah, I'm showing 2:00 PM, but.
I'll verify that.
If you can verify and get an email out to us. But as a commission, we have endorsed a route.
Yep.
So, yep.
And then one, one other quick thing. On Saturday with coffee with the legislators, there was a lot of discussion about this. No smoking and who's liable for putting up the signs, whatever. And I noticed there's been letters to the editor. I think with the 67% of the people in North Dakota voting for this, people need to respect, and they need to stay away 20 feet from the entrance of the buildings. They're not doing that. And also with the cigarette butts. I think it's the people, there are 32 people in this city that are selling cigarettes. They need to step up to the plate and take some responsibility about people going out of their establishments and smoking. You know, they need to have cans for the cigarette butts or sweep. We shouldn't, as the public, have to walk by and step in a bunch of cigarette butts and, or provide signs. They're on the internet, run them off. Put them up, just like you have signs up for no drinking or no one allowed under 21. How hard can that be? That's all I'm going to say about that.
Okay. Any other comment, Mr. Coling?
Just to follow up on that briefly, Commissioner Ducart, the ordinance that the commission passed regarding the smoking ban, the 20-foot distance where people are supposed to maintain from outside an entrance, the complaints on that can go to Southwest District Health Unit. They are the initial responding agency who will take those complaints. And then if necessary, if it becomes a repeatable offense, or repeated offense, rather, we do take those through municipal court. But Southwest District Health Unit is the initial party receiving those complaints.
Okay, so it's not the coalition, it's the Southwest District Health?
Correct.
Because they've been calling the police department, the police department tells them to go to the southwest. And I think they misunderstood then, because then they go back and say, well, the coalition doesn't know anything about it, so. Okay, good, glad you clarified that. Thank you.
Anything else by commissioners? Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. No one from the public?